I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great turnout today. I appreciate everyone. Council worked really hard this year to try to deliver a very fiscally responsible budget that met the needs of all the department heads and look forward to hearing everybody's feedback. Kathy's not in here, so I'm gonna thank her while she's not here. But she was a tremendous help to us this year and Beth has always was a great asset to the process. So we thank her too. Any other thoughts from the council about everything? All right, I will open the floor for anybody that wants to discuss budgets and I guess just kinda go first come, first served and we'll go to the podium so that we have the microphone there.
Okay.
Hit it Judge.
Yeah. All right. Obviously appreciate the facilities, everything you guys do. I know you got difficult decisions. Appreciate the raise. I would like for it to get higher. We might discuss that at least with regard to the corporate orders. But the main thing I need to talk about is software. If you look at our budget there on the software, we had traditionally gotten about $1,200 on the software. I can certainly understand why you cut it. If I give you some explanation, it might cause you to think a little differently about it. Three years ago, I think we spent all but two or $300 of it and then two years ago, I think we spent all but a penny. We've got, you got the list of the software we have to buy every year. I'll let her look that up, but I'll just explain to you that last year, we didn't spend a nickel of it, which is I'm sure why we didn't get it. And the reason we didn't spend a nickel was is that we knew that we had this big project coming up and so we were scrimping and saving in 18 because we thought that we were gonna spend that money in 18 and in 19. Well, it turned out that there were some, I don't know, snafus or something, so we didn't get started until 19. So you got all of it back, all $1,200 back in 18. And then we had been holding it back in 19 because we spent about sixty, between $6,000 and $7,000 upgrading our Liberty Court Player, which is the thing that records all the hearings and our computers or software and things like that. It was kind of a big project that we were saving money back for. So between the time that you looked at it and said, well, he didn't spend the $1,200 last year and he hadn't spent it this year, we've spent all of it in towards that $67,000 project. And so at any rate, we're gonna have to, we're gonna need some money for software and we can't, we can't have zero. It's antivirus. I mean, stuff you just have to do. I suppose we could be, I could be Monty Hall and we could do a let's make a deal thing. I could probably suck it up and scrape by with half, which would be about $600. But I don't know whether, at any rate, that's my pitch. I suppose you'll take it under advisement. Is that what you want me to do? Tammy, what do you have? No, no. Can you tell me the software that we need to upgrade?
Usually we run off of WordPerfect, Hot Docs, Microsoft Word, Excel, Adobe, Bitdefender.
That's the antivirus.
The antivirus. And we are networked together, so it's in our network within our office. So any of that software upgrades to that.
So anyway, that's why we didn't spend it last year. We were saving it for this. We thought we were gonna spend it at the end of the year. We didn't. We spent all of it this year. We spent all of it two years ago and basically all of it three years ago. And while maybe we can scrape by with less than $1,200, zero, that's my pitch. Have a nice day.
I'll keep it short and just simply say thank you. We all have budgets, obviously we have to work under. I guess the plus for our office is that we have various, if you don't know, various funds that we can also work down to. To, we're having shortfalls, maybe we can look at those funds, various funds that everybody gets to themselves. On behalf of myself and our staff, I thank you for providing this report.
Thanks.
I have three that I wanted to bring up if possible. The first one, my 1172 Lit PSAT is our ID Networks. I spoke with Josh briefly yesterday and I apologize, I apparently didn't put this in the package, so I do have copies. To explain what it is, ID Networks is our CAD system where we log all of our calls to our service. We got the first year free, which ends in December this year, so the next year, our maintenance would be due if we wanted to continue it. It includes maintenance for everybody that has the system and any upgrades that they offer and no additional charge. The option is for $31,590. That's why I asked for $32,000. So I was hoping that you could reevaluate that and put that back in. The next one in the same budget is for our server. I spoke with our chief, I believe I included this in there for you as well, from Dell. Our servers are at end of life. They were purchased in 2014 with a five-year warranty. And they hold our CAD system, the jail domain, so any inmate information, they hold that.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
I spoke to Doug Junior.
Okay.
And he said they installed a brand-new server. Is that not the same server?
It's not the same server.
So what is this, that server holds the CAD system?
It holds a portion of the CAD, yes. We have some of the CAD on the servers that I'm asking for, like the jail division, the RMS. Some of that information is stored on those servers as well.
So that other server doesn't have the capacity to handle both?
Are you talking about the ones they installed?
Yes.
That I don't know. I do know that there is some on the old servers, but I'm not sure if they can put it all onto theirs. But the old servers hold other things than just that CAD. So it holds all of our, anything internet capable, so IDAX, which is our state national system where we run driver's license, promiscerries, things like that. So if the server were to go down, we wouldn't be able to run those things. It holds our VPN, it holds our 911 phone lines, so if the server were to go down, we wouldn't be able to accept 911 calls because they're internet-based. So I asked for you to reevaluate that. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was in the statewide, the 1120, or I'm sorry, the 1222, was the insurance medical. I spoke with the state board president yesterday. I'm not 100% clear on how you guys are planning to do that. He wanted to reiterate that those funds can't be put somewhere else for the potential of other county employees being paid off of those. So I'm not sure what the plan is with it. I was not 100% clear when we talked yesterday, but he just wanted me to remind you that that can't be used with the potential of another county employee insurance being paid out of that.
Right.
So he just wanted me to remind you.
Yeah.
What was the cost on a server?
The server, we would need two. They're $9,349.80, so just under $20,000.
What was that?
For one is $9,349.80 and we would need two, so just under $20,000.
And how long would these servers last?
The typical warranty that Steve expressed to me last night was five years.
So they don't work after that?
They could. You take the chance of a five-year warranty if it were to break. We would have to rely on a company that we use called Sound Advice to come and try to fix it and it's not guaranteed that they could fix it. And we would have to wait for them to get here. So it could be a day or two, whereas with the warranty, they have staff and parts here within four hours.
So you have zero redundancy in these servers currently?
Correct. Once this warranty ends, yeah.
So how does the warranty provide redundancy?
They have someone here within four hours to fix it.
That's not redundancy. If the server fails, is there redundancy in the servers?
Other than having someone come in and fix it within four hours.
So there's no?
No, other than the warranty, no. Other than having someone come in and fix it.
Right, and there's no guarantee that that person can fix it when they get here in four hours?
With the warranty, yes. Because when we call them, we would explain to them what's happened and they will know. We've had an issue before where it's went down and they, we've called them, explained it to them, they've been within four hours with the parts and it's been fixed.
So if that server goes down, 911 doesn't work?
Correct.
So in your department, 911 was down for some period of time?
It could.
Was it or was it not?
There have been times that it went down, yes.
And so?
What happens if 911's down?
It could roll to another agency. It went down before and we've not known it. People haven't called, so we've not known it and it's not affected anything.
But it does go to somewhere else, isn't it?
It goes, yes.
And which one of these include the upgrades?
The ID Networks.
And how often do you have to do the upgrades?
Whenever they roll something new out, we do the upgrade. So they could do three upgrades a year, they could do one upgrade a year.
So when I talked to Doug Junior, he essentially told me that spending $32,000 was probably not prudent because the, there's no reason to have 24-hour support on everything.
On the paperwork, there are three different options.
Right.
So, I mean ideally, I would like, to save money, we can go with the eight to five, so that's eight days a week, or I'm sorry, five days a week, eight hours a day, support. I really don't wanna, if possible, go with the no after-hours because we have had issues overnight, in the middle of the night, where we needed to call them and they provided us assistance.
What's the frequency with which you would need to call them and what is the charge per hour or à la carte to just call, you pay for what you call for?
I honestly don't know that. We've never discussed that throughout the process.
Do you have like a historical, do you have some data that would suggest, like we know from past years, we've had to call this many times, so we would project in 2020, you know, estimate it?
I will say, into it probably, we could speak a little bit on this too. The first year's been kinda rough. Some of the things that we were told we would be getting or would be up and running initially wasn't. So we've been working with them to get those things where they're supposed to be for our contracts. So they have been a little slow to start, but they have been working diligently to try to get those things moving for us within that first year of free maintenance.
Those are setup problems and purchase problems that they?
Correct. So I would say if the problems outside of that, we may call them less than five times a month from the dispatch side. As of officers and things like that, I don't know how often they call because they each have their own ability to call for that assistance. So from dispatch side, I would say probably five times a month would fall.
So there were less than five, or there were five calls for service for after-hours over the last year. So the difference between $32,000 and $26,000, I believe, with the volume of calls that did, that did $72,000. But my broader question is, I don't see in the, in your budget, in your previous budget, and you may be able to help me with this, that we were spending maintenance fees with the previous CAD system.
As I, we didn't, we paid very minimal for the CAD before and the maintenance. And I can say since 2016, when I started, to 2018, I never called for support because I was only understanding that they didn't, they never called back or anything like that. So we would always refer to Chief Mullin for support, so we never paid for support in the past.
Okay. Well, I can't find any council member that was on this council in 2016 and none of us were that had any recollection of being told that there was gonna be $32,000 of ongoing support in perpetuity on this system.
It was in the contract that was given to them for a deal.
Okay, if you could produce a kind of a contract.
Yeah. Yeah.
The ongoing capital costs are, in your department, are getting really out of control. You spend $100,000 on a piece of equipment, you get $20,000 in maintenance. I mean, those things, those ongoing costs are a much bigger hindrance to your department being fiscally sound and capital cost. So, you know, just looking at, you know, some of the, just the financial reality of your department, it's getting, you know, other budget priorities are gonna be chewed up by these
Right.
maintenance expenses.
Right.
Just food for thought there, looking at the future, because, you know, next year you're gonna come up with more than, over your $50,000 a year to do support on the regular system.
Right.
So, you know, those, just those two functions, $8,000 a year.
And they're, I mean, they're vital functions. We all know.
10% of your budget.
Right.
So, or ish.
Right.
So, and that's all new in the last 12, 24 months, for next year's budget.
Right.
I have one. The insurance person that we talked to, who was that?
It was our statewide president, the statewide board president.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm just gonna be like Tony. I just wanna say thank you. You guys do an awesome job, so I appreciate it.
I just wanna thank you for the autopsy grease, but I have two concerns. The lawn and building, I know building, we aren't gonna mention that, but the lawn, I was concerned whether I could get put on the county for spraying the weeds or if we put a little bit in there so we can manage the weeds. And the second was equipment, because that's like buying my body back, it's kind of vital. And it was taken to zero, but last year I had, I got a grant, so I do have some through that grant, so I haven't spent much this last year because of that. But that's not promised year to year. Any concerns, just ask that you take that under consideration.
Good morning. Benvenia, Carol, City Court. Wanted to say thank you. I saw that Bruce and Ray's for SAB, which was the most pressing issue from my perspective. I had mentioned about a potential issue that seemed to be on the horizon that wasn't covered in the budget and it seems like the horizon's moved out. They told us November of this year was gonna be the rollout for our new case management system. We've received emails and because of that rollout, most of our technology is gonna be obsolete, the sky's falling, et cetera. It turns out the rollout's not gonna happen. We don't know when and we found some alternate sources of funding the project. Since we had bought some computers out of our budget this year, the commissioners were doing some computer upgrades and things and we piggybacked with them to resource our project. So I don't think it's gonna be an issue that we need to deal with anytime soon. I think everything's been covered and I haven't gone through the rest of the budget with the binding to the com. I saw some things were taken down, but I'm sure we'll be able to survive, so I'll thank you for the effort. I'm sure this is a complicated process and we appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Thanks Judge. Anybody else?
Yeah, soil and water staff and board, thank you for all your work as well.
Thank you.
This is short. First of all, I'd like to thank the department heads, thank you for the work that you do and also thank you for the approval of the part-time position to full-time for area planning, that's gonna be a huge help moving forward. Couple of things. One, currently I'm using my personal vehicle. I use that for the fire department, football, several things. We have, we're gonna have a lot of money left from the director, director position, from that salary position, so I'm asking, there's gonna be $24,297.77 left at the end of the year. And that's going to take $20,000 out of that and there's gonna be $8,000 left from the sodium ordinance that I don't know that you've used for several years. I'm asking for, I'd like to ask for $28,000 for the purpose of vehicle. I'll take what I can get, to be honest with you, because right now I'm using my personal vehicle and a full car and I don't have the proper insurance if something happens on the head. So that's something I'm looking to go forward on. Also, a cellphone. I went with Donnie Shockley, researched several plans. Kinda teamed up with him on a company over in Montana called Cricket. $30,000 plan, so I'm asking for $400 to be added to my telephone line. $3,000, two one. Other than that, thank you again for what you guys do.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Thank you.
Also I'm gonna add, if he does get a vehicle, he would need line item next year for insurance and for maintenance. It's more for the budget plan, looking at doing to it. So I don't know, more likely about $1,000 for insurance. Hopefully the new vehicle wouldn't be much maintenance.
Thanks, Don. Anybody else?
Well, thank you for the raise, your name, but every service office. I'd like to mention that I do put in more hours than what shows in my time card. You know, it just kinda helps, helps in that regard. Some things have improved, but I think if you make it modest, I think that's 50%. But one thing I did this year is I used the county car when I had to, had a very perfect three-days training. Also used the credit card. So that helped on the mileage cost and also helped on the service officer's school cost. I'd like to mention that I always go down the day of the meeting and I stay at, at other counties, there are some offices I know that have the night before and they stay in the big motels in Vermont. I don't do that. Try to save most money. I don't mind doing that, really. Office equipment, a hundred dollars. I don't see any need for us needing office equipment. Office furniture can reduce to zero. I did wanna get a new front end cabinet. I just happened to find one in the basement two days ago. It's just, it worked great. It's five doors, it got rails in it and it's just what I'm looking for, so I won't need that. One thing I would request is, my clerical helper, her helper, got no raise at all and I would like to see her get something. And I wouldn't mind if you, if you maybe take a couple hundred dollars from either burial soldiers or veteran memorials because usually I do end up almost in a positive Mr. Accounts. So that's really the only reconsideration I would ask, give my part-time helpers a consideration. She's doing the job that she used to do and despite her, she gets appreciated. So I do appreciate the raise you gave me and thank you for it and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right. It's two minutes till nine and we have to call this meeting to adjournment and then start our other meeting. Last call for comment.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanna just say thank you and hope that you got my email and ultimately maybe we could get a range in the salary ordinance so that, you know, I could say people that I'm training could make a lesser amount instead of being locked in at that one.
That's a, that's a really good point. We, for 2021, next year's budget, and that's gonna be a top priority of ours is to assess that.
So we won't be able to revisit that for this next year?
For 2020, it's, it's a huge project because the, every job description, the whole salary ordinance, everything has to be redone to do the range then, so.
Yeah, that's not your office here, so we, I mean, if you're going lower, I don't think it would be a problem for the pull-out. You know, when it affects job descriptions.
Well, we can't pay less than what's on the job description. I mean, I'm sorry, you're, just the salary.
Yeah, it would be on there.
Yeah, right.
And I have a lot of departments.
On the job description, is it?
No. So, I mean, that's one concern that a lot of departments have brought up to me. And I think it's a good thing. Just my two cents here.
I just wanna say thank you for the health department. Overall, we were very pleased with our budget. Thank you for the raises. We had, the only concern we had was the car replacement money and how there this year was taken away and the refrigerator replacement. We've got two refrigerators, in the last seven years, we got our first two refrigerator grants. They cost $5,000 to $7,000. They are required with distinct to have now a medical refrigerator. I did buy one last year with the money we'd saved over the year and we had $2,000 every year put in there, but it takes $7,000 if. Right now, the reason we had to replace last year was the compressor went out and it takes $3,000 to fix it. And it's, we decided for the door that it wasn't worth fixing, that much money and it didn't last. And the car, we got nothing there. We put $5,000 in that every year since 2013 and we were just curious as to why we didn't get any this year of those two, and that was that. Otherwise, budget was fine. Thank you.
And I wanted to speak to that, Joyce, the, that money is, your rate is collected regardless. So whether it's appropriated or not, doesn't really matter in terms of, that money's still going into the health fund. So whether it's appropriate or not, the money still goes into your, into your fund line. So on the years where you actually wanna buy the car, then you can put it in there. But there's really no reason to appropriate it every year because you're not gonna spend it. So if it's $5,000 a year, it would be unappropriated for four years and then the fifth year, you would appropriate $25,000. So you don't, you don't need to.
I know, I know last year we got the bid and asked for the car to use that money and we were, we got everything we're supposed to do and denied getting it and that's why we have to tote our cars using it. It's had, you know, we actually have, we've retired on some things of that too, so.
We probably are, I know they're looking at at least two, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay. Any?
Yeah.
Just wanna thank you guys for the work and the time that you put in doing our budgets. We have a large budget, we understand that and we just thank you again as is happy with our. Thank you.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, get under our remarks, because it needs. All right, motion by Ethan Brown, second. Hold on, Tim Brown. Oh, what? Sorry.
Yeah, I'll worry the kittens, Bill.
Motion by Ethan Brown, seconded by Scott Earp. All of them favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes six. Welcome to the show. Hard add. Everybody clear out here for us?
It is, I told you, I said, "You should get this to your wife." And he goes, "Well, how much does it cost?" We said, "It's thirty-three dollars a year."
It's standing in your budget, they've got a plan for it, so you can, for saving up money in your resume, for their cash flow, knowing that they wanna do it. So they can ask for an additional.